And just in the nick of time.
Are we doing council comments or what comments?
Public.
Public comments. Why isn't my computer turning on? Wake up.
Go ahead. Your official peace delegate. Just wanted to update you on something coming up that you may think people want to know about. There's a, what do you call it, Montgomery Peace Action. They're having a petition going around, or should I say, you know, yeah, petition going around trying to get cities to adopt a resolution asking the Pentagon to release 25 percent of its budget for the cities, for the needs of our own cities. It's called Fund Our Communities. And I'll be able to bring you some more information like some leaflets and stuff for you next week. But I'm asking if the city council would want to take part in this. We're asking the government to release and shift over 25 percent of our defense budget, our war budget, so it doesn't go into bombing other countries and stuff and it can be used to helping our cities. And Montgomery Peace Action is spearheading the campaign on this. And hopefully Tacoma Park will be the first one to sign on to this. We're asking you people if you can pass a resolution supporting this. Second thing is, we've only got 15 more days to vote. And if us Democrats don't get up off of stick and do something about it, we're not going to have any gains that we've been working on for the last many years. You know, we've got to get people out and voting on the 2nd of November. It's only 15 days away. And I'd like to ask you people as well as everybody else if you can maybe put a reminder up in the lobby of this community center reminding people to vote and asking the schools if they can, you know, bring a note home to their parents requesting them to remember that November 2nd is voting day. And that would be wonderful if you could do that. Because there's nothing more important now if we want to keep what we've worked for than our basic right and our basic duty to vote. V-O-T-E. It's not that hard to do. If I can do it on oxygen and totally blind, amputee, broken back, and many other terminal conditions, there's no reason why any able-bodied person cannot at least come out and vote. You know, it's bad enough that there's so much apathy going on, but we've got to combat that if we want to keep the gains we've done. And also, please supervise your kids on this Halloween. There's nothing more precious than our children. They're our future leaders and we have to do everything we can to protect their safety. Remember, we're going to keep the safety first on this Halloween. By drinking, drugging, and driving is concerned, and the safety of our kids, we've got to keep public safety and children's safety in our utmost. We can't keep burying our head in the sand thinking it won't happen to us because it can. And remember, don't forget to vote! November 2nd, don't forget to vote out there if you're listening. Please, do it for me if anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody else who'd like to make comments, public comment?
Joel, I'm the former chair, or the chair of the former task force. I'm not sure if it's the former chair of the former task force on the environment. I know that you guys are going to be talking in a staff session about some of these things. And I just wanted to bring a couple of things to your attention. I know there's some question about the city budget and your ability to implement some of the recommendations of the task force. The task force specifically made a number of recommendations that actually generated revenue. For example, just one of them, the waste changes. These are things that will have environmental benefits and will generate money for the city, thus paying for themselves. So we'd like you to look at the things that you can do easiest. You asked us to do the most bang for the buck and that's what we provided you. So we're hoping that you can focus on those things as opposed to focusing on the things that are harder to do. And I know sometimes there's a natural gravitation toward trying to be critical about certain things rather than looking at the things that are able to accomplish. So, the other thing is we also did a high priority recommendation section. Those were the things that we thought were the most important based on the people that you appointed, so we'd ask you to focus on those as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hello, my name is Brett Wiley. I live at 251 Manor Circle, and I've been a resident of Tacoma Park for nine months and this is my first city council meeting. But yeah, I'm curious as to what the body is looking to do for young people living in Tacoma Park and just embody what you're going to do. And also I would recommend to heed the requests of the Environmental Sustainability Committee or the environmental task force. And my experience, I studied biology and environmental studies in college, and the long-term nature of our planet depends on decisions you're making now. So I really ask you to take heed of what you're deciding for the future for myself and for yourself and your children and grandchildren. So, thanks.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Are you in the middle, you're not in the middle of Manor Circle but on the outside.
Outside, Ward 2, I believe.
Might be Ward 3 because I think that's, I have the outside and Ward 2 has the inside.
Okay.
So, hi, welcome.
Hello.
I just want to warn you that if you stand up in front of us and ask about what we're doing for you.
Yeah.
We're likely to enlist you to do something for us.
Okay. I could maybe help you.
Good. What was your name again?
Brett Wiley.
Okay, Brad?
Brett.
Brett. Thank you, Brett.
Yes, with two Ts.
Thanks very much. Anybody else? Okay, sorry, Councilmember Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, I apologize for getting here late this evening. And I noticed I missed the discussion about the agenda. Is that possible? Could open that again and talk about it?
It's an additional agenda item for this evening or an agenda scheduling update?
Yeah, I was just going to ask that we change the council comments back to the beginning of the session as it's been in the past because I find them very useful in the past, especially when I want to thank the staff for things like coming to the Ritchie Citizens Association and presenting the traffic calming findings from the contractor. I know that many people from the neighborhood came and were very pleased to see the progress and look forward to future changes to what before is presented to the council. Thank you.
Yes, we are going to talk about that.
Thank you.
City manager's comments?
Just one. I was just going to note that the Tacoma Junction Task Force will be holding its first meeting this Wednesday on October 20th.
And if you could remind us, did we give them a general timeframe that they're operating under?
One year.
Okay.
Sorry, Bob. The Tacoma Junction Task Force is meeting on which day?
This Wednesday, the 20th.
And where is that?
At 7:30 in the LILAC Room.
LILAC Room.
Okay, then we will move to our first work session item, which is a discussion of Montgomery Housing Partnership's request for a pilot for the Edinburgh House at 7513 Maple Avenue.
Linda Walker, Affordable Housing Manager. Robert Goldman and Praj Kazbekar and Arti Harris are here tonight from Montgomery Housing Partnership to continue the discussion regarding their request for a 10-year pilot for 7513 Maple Avenue. As you recall, they are interested in doing a major renovation to the property and they are seeking a 100% abatement of taxes for a 10-year period. At the last work session on September 20th, the council asked for income and expense documentation. They have provided that information and it's attached to the cover memo, which gives three different scenarios. The financial situation given 100% pilot, a 50% pilot, and then with no pilot. So they're here to give you a briefing and then also to answer your questions.
Welcome back.
Yep, thank you for having me. As we talked about last time, Montgomery Housing Partnership, a private nonprofit organization, been in existence since 1989. And, you know, we've owned Edinburgh House for a number of years as a property that when bought, we did sort of more of a moderate renovation at the time. And the property is in dire need of renovation. And we really need to look at the full systems. We need to, we really want to position this property for the next 20 to 30 years. And to do that, you know, we see ourselves as long-term owners. We're not here to buy properties and flip them in, you know, five, seven-year timeframe. We're really here to create quality affordable housing over the long term. And to do that, we really need to take advantage of financing that we can upfront, get the capital together, do the renovation and do that work so that we can operate that in an affordable way over the long term. At the request of your staff, we have presented you with a short memo as well as three different scenarios, looking at the rents and expenses for the property as well as sort of a 10-year pro forma, looking at that over time. I think, as we talked about last time, I think the long and short of it is a full pilot or not getting a full pilot creates about a $200,000 gap in our ability to put the financing together. And that's a gap that we would have to try to, we did not get a pilot, would have to try to find some way to remedy. Really happy to answer any questions that people might have.
My colleagues, have any questions? Councilmember Robinson.
This is questions, I guess, I think my comments are probably more in the category of comments, so I don't think I have any questions. I think I understand what you're saying.
Councilmember Wright.
In the memo received, I had a quick question. It says that in addition to reducing operating costs, the pilot will attract additional investments at Tacoma Park that would not otherwise be available in addition to the bond financing. State CDA would provide $750,000. Montgomery County DHC has already invested about 1.5 million. So are you saying that if we don't do the pilot at all, those things might not be there? Or if we do the pilot at 50%, they wouldn't be there? Or they might be incrementally reduced? Or if we did the pilot 50%, would that money still be in the deal?
Well, I think there are two elements. I mean, that money is, you know, certain money is there. The state, so one element is if we don't have the pilot, we have a gap. And so there's the potential if we can't solve the gap that the whole thing sort of, it all disappears. I mean, we can't close the deal. Ideally, we're this far along, we try to find some way to make the deal happen. I think the second element here is that, you know, the state, you know, requires, you know, seeks out sort of local contribution. That's what they require of all projects, whether they're done by bonds or other mechanisms through the housing program, Department of Housing and Community Development. There are mechanisms to sort of, the city to tag along onto a county investment and there's some waivers or other things that you can do. But I think, well, I think one of the things we're saying is that long-term, I think, you know, I think that puts, it makes it more difficult for us as we try to compete for dollars, to try to compete against other folks and other projects that have that commitment. Is it, what will happen on this specific project, you know, it's hard to tell. We're still trying to fill gaps and, you know, we're trying to get a little more from the county, a little more from the state, and how will they view this, you know, if we don't get it? I mean, we've had instances in the past where they have not been pleased, you know, they have to put up more because of somebody else's action. So those all play into account. I can't say specifically, they haven't really, we haven't posed that question.
And then a couple of other questions as I look at the detailed finances, which are helpful. I'm wondering, when you look at these expenses, so if I were to look at just the 2009, which is the first page we got there, not numbered, when you look at like office rent and expenses and payroll and payroll taxes, miscellaneous administrative expenses, are those incremental expenses that Montgomery Housing Partnership incurs or are they fully loaded expenses?
These are, these are, these are all expenses of the property. None of them are expenses of MHP. What we do with the Edinburgh property, because it's only 45 units, we, that office manages a few other of our properties too. And so we do a, you know, a pro-rata share for certain office expenses such as the office manager and other site staff. We allocate them by the number of units.
Okay, so that sounds like fully loaded to me. On the cash flow page, I'm just curious about the replacement reserve. So I'm just trying to understand the numbers here. When you go down to net operating income and you see that replacement reserve line. And so if I look in 2011, it has $14,625 and then it's 14,918 and gross, that's the actual, it's not cumulative, right? It's not like you have-
That's not the cumulative number. That's the annual amount that we would put into the replacement reserve and allow it to increase over time.
So, but there's not a listing of what the replacement reserve number is here? So my question is, I guess at the end of 2012, is the replacement reserve, what's in that replacement reserve, 14,918? Or is it the total of those two numbers?
Well, it would effectively be the total, the total. You would have to add up what the accumulation is.
And have you all been doing that over the past life of the project? And is that replacement reserve being used to invest and reinvest in the property?
Yeah, I don't know what the balance is. We had a major expense recently that just, we just decided could not wait until this closing and this financing, which was a lot of work around the spalling, some concrete spalling and stuff like that. And so knowing that we were about to close on this financing and could, you know, replenish the replacement reserve, we allowed that reserve to kind of be depleted to a certain degree.
Last question, I have one comment. Does MHP take a fee or often be referred to as a developer fee in the for-profit world? But is there a fee that you're getting as a part of this project? And is that fee, what is that fee in terms of total dollars and as a percentage of the total money invested?
We do get a fee. In part, the lenders and the investors actually insist on a fee because the reality is if there's risk in terms of cost overruns or other things, they want a pot of money to be able to go after. So we get a fee and the state has sort of a formula by which they allocate, allow fee. We actually are putting back about 30, 35% of our fee into the deal, but there will be fees.
And do you know what the dollar value and the percentage of the total deal is of that fee?
I don't know the dollar value at the top of my head. Typically, it's around 10, 10 to 12%. It's typical formula for the state. But it's 10% to 12% of certain allocated costs and not all costs. So I don't know what that number is.
And how much is being totally invested? What's the total deal in terms of dollars going into the project?
I don't have that on the top of my head either. I can get that for you.
We had, it's not in this packet. I know it was last time it was presented to us. Sounds like maybe some information's coming, so I'll just make my comment while, to be, it is, I'm very committed to affordable housing and very much a fan of the work you all do. But it is pretty stark to see the percentage that the rents for the subsidized units or affordable units are below the market rate, that they only end up being 13% and 11% below the market rate to meet the 60 and 50% of median income. And it's, I just thought I would expect a deeper discount. I know that's not how the numbers work out, but I think that's interesting for the public to know and consider.
To be honest with you, and we probably shouldn't even put that in, it's not clear that that's actual market rent. That's just, I think, a plug-in number that we put in here. I think, I don't, it's not based on the market.
If you look at the percentages, it's-
Congressman Poney, please.
I'm sorry, my name is Praj. I'm the project manager. And if you look on the sheet of the rents, the last column says percent of the median. So if you look at even our market rents, we're around 54% of the median of what is allowable rents. So we have sort of compared our rents to Park Ritchie, which is a market rate, and some other areas. And our rents are definitely lower. So even our market rents are affordable because I think our policy is even if there's a renter out there who can't fit under 60%, around 60% AMI, and if he wants to come under market rate unit, we still have a unit for that person and we don't have to turn them away because it's a market rate. We can't fill that up or something like that.
So that's very helpful to understand because you're also comparing yourself, if you're comparing yourself to the Park Ritchie, you're comparing yourself to a rent stabilized unit in Tacoma Park, which isn't the true market rate rent for the area, which is what the available median income. So thank you for clarifying that. That makes me convinced that the discount is actually quite a bit steeper. I remain willing to do a 50% pilot. That's where I was last week. I appreciate you coming back and giving us more of the numbers. And a lot of that has to do with, we provide affordable housing in a way that the county does not, which is through rent stabilization. They do not rebate us for that in any way. I understand the county's doing 100% pilot on this and I commend them for that and think they should do that in Tacoma Park or in other places in the county. And I think for us to do a 50% pilot shows our deep commitment to this, but also is realistic to how we finance affordable housing in the city and also our current fiscal situation, where we're getting an unfair rebate back from the county on a number of things. And actually have had deep cuts from the state. Again, applaud them for making this investment, but for the few things the state gives us money for in their budget, they deeply cut, not related to housing, but deeply cut that amount.
Councilmember Clay.
Thank you for coming. I agree with Councilmember Wright that I appreciate the work that you do, but just, I can't support this project. There's a couple of things. One of them is your comments about local share and the state reaction. The, I just want other council colleagues to consider that the county is a local government in Maryland. And if only 15% of the people live in cities, then the state is making arrangements with places where, you know, there aren't cities all the time, where the county is who represents the local share. And I don't think the state's going to have a really negative reaction. The state totally hosed us on highway revenue, so I feel like, you know, they haven't been a great player with us to begin with. I have a problem with the idea that the green aspects would not be able to be included and it just doesn't ring true because of the return on the investment. If you look at the material that you gave us, you indicated that if we didn't provide this money, that was to the equivalent of the green investments in the building and therefore they wouldn't be built. But if you look at the numbers of the green investments, the fact is the green investments pay for themselves like many green investments do. I can't believe you would be foolish enough to not do, not make the green investments which will bring you back money and essentially pay for yourselves and instead, you know, cut something else that doesn't pay for itself. So, I know this is not really a question of this, but if I had a question, this is what it would be, and maybe you could answer this for me. I just can't understand why this is happening 15 years after the last redo, 15 years of previous pilot. And my question is, you know, why not spend this money to acquire additional housing instead of rehabbing what appears to me to be a functional unit? I just, I don't, I don't understand it. When we looked at the numbers last time, and we don't have all those numbers again this time, I think Councilmember Robinson and I were working the same calculator and we came up with something like, is it $270,000 per unit? And 160-something of that was the rehab costs and the rest was like the re-acquisition of the property because it all gets refinanced. And a lot of that extra $100,000 per unit, I think, comes out of, was it $3 million in legal fees or something, fees and legal, wasn't that the number?
Something like that.
It's been two weeks, but I have a relatively good memory. It was a ton of money to roll this project over and I just can't support spending even a little bit of Tacoma Park taxpayer dollars. And I can't understand why the state wants to do a deal like this either because I want the state to use my state taxpayer dollars to acquire addition, not, you know, not new or necessarily new, but to acquire additional affordable housing. That's what I have said the entire time that I have been here, that low-income tax credit is my preferred method of providing housing affordability. And this just doesn't make sense to me. I just, I can't, I can't support it.
I'm sorry, you said there's a comment and there's a question. I wasn't sure exactly.
But why? Why not, why not acquire additional housing with these tax rates?
Very simply, this property is absolutely, in terms of the system's needs, capital. And we've gone as long as we feel we can operate it the way it is.
Didn't you just buy it 15 years ago? How long did you buy it?
It's been about 15 years, yes.
Wasn't there a big capital investment then that included pilots from the county and the city and the state?
In the scheme of things, it was a very moderate, and it's not our, and this is sort of goes back to some of our discussions last time. We've done some deals with a very modest amount of capital when we buy it. We've done other deals with a much more substantial. And our experience has been, when we do the more substantial, it's, long-term in terms of the operations, it works much better. But at some point in time, if you put in the modest approach, at some point in time, the life of the building comes due. And you've got major systems that need to be done. And when you start doing the major systems, you're no longer grandfathered in terms of various code issues. And so you have basically an adjusting of the building. And so this is that point where the building absolutely needs a major infusion of capital to be able to continue for the next 15 to 20, 30 years.
But I think there's a difference between the systems upgrade and some of the other things that are happening. I've owned a house now for 15 years and for 15 years I've had Formica countertops in my house. And I would love to have one of these fancy new countertops that you can like set hot stuff on and your kids can scrape things across and you just, you know, sand it out. But I don't, I have Formica countertops. And in fact, I think the Formica countertops in the house that I currently live in are like 30 years old. And I hear that a lot from my constituents, especially right now.
I understand, but in the scheme of what the work that's being done, the bulk of the money is in major systems that need to be upgraded and-
I think the bulk of the money is in the fees and the attorney's costs and the acquisition sites.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just explain to me, Councilmember Clay is talking about re-acquisition. Is that what I heard, the word you used? Why, if you've already, what is, can you sort of explain that to me?
Yes, I'm happy to.
It's an innocent question, it's not loaded.
No, I totally understand and I can understand the confusion because it's not easy. Under the tax credit program, be able to take advantage of the most credits and therefore take advantage of the most investment dollars coming into the deal, we are effectively selling the property to a partnership. Because to sell the credits, we need to enter into a partnership such that the investors can get the 99- a partnership, such that the investors can get the ninety-nine-point-nine-nine percent of the tax credit, because we don't pay taxes in terms of the federal government, so the tax credit doesn't serve us any purpose, so we sell the credits, and you can't quote "sell" them like you go to the grocery store, you have to enter into a partnership.
I understand that.
Okay, so the way you get the maximum amount of tax credits allocated to a property is you get it for the acquisition, and you get it for the renovation, and so in order for us, and since we are not the partnership right now, we would sell the property to the partnership, and from that set, and so that the price of that sale, the market price of that sale, we get credits, tax credits for that part, as well as we get tax credits for the renovation, the amount of renovation we do, the money that, in terms of that sale, any money after paying back the lenders is going back into the deal, so it's, that part of it is more of a paper transaction, it's not added costs in the sense of the project, but it's a mechanism that has to be done.
No, I understand, I used to work in this business years ago, back when there was federal historic tax credits and investment tax credits, and we used to renovate historic properties, and nonprofit organizations would do just what you're talking about, because the investors didn't care, in quotes, about the project's purpose, they were looking for tax shelters, all of which Congress eliminated in nineteen-eighty-six tax law, but it was a way to make projects workable that were otherwise not possible, but the only question I have following up is that because this becomes a real estate transaction, then aren't there also then settlement costs, like recordation fees, that go to the county and the state and all of that, that have to be paid out, but not to mention the attorney's fees, transfer taxes, the, you know, ad nauseam list of things are always, so that, that's kind of like, the sort of the cost of the arbitrage.
Yes, and, you know, it's not a perfect system, it's not the system that I would have created, but it is a system net out of that, out of those costs, there are added costs to do it this way, but you get far more in terms of equity from the investment.
No, I understand that, I'm just, I'm not criticizing that, what you're trying to do, I see that you need to do that to get to your goal, what I'm saying is, is that the state is going to collect all these fees and recordation and transfer taxes, not to come apart, and so, you know, if it's so hard for them to make this, or you guys to make this project work, makes me then sort of wonder, well, why isn't the state waiving all those taxes, because they don't serve any productive use from your point of view, it's just friction.
Absolutely.
I mean, because frankly, well, this city can't afford it, I mean, you know the story, it's already been explained to you, and you read the newspapers, and you know how this city and some other municipalities have gotten the shaft from the state legislature the last fiscal year, and we're still suffering from that going forward, so the idea of waiving property taxes on a project, forty-five units, is concerning, it really is, thank you.
I want to follow up on Councilmember Schultz's line of questioning for a second, and just make sure I understand, on the sale to the partnership, some of whom, some of whom or all of whom will be able to use the tax credits, is MHP part of that partnership, are you selling it to yourselves with a new consortium?
We, so right now, MHP, as affiliate of MHP owns the full property, a hundred percent, when it's sold to the investment partnership, MHP will be the general partner, will own point-oh-one percent of the project, and be the general partner, so we will operate, continue to operate it day-to-day, the limited partner, who, you know, is not involved day-to-day, they're in it for the credits and the tax, the tax benefits, so they're ninety-nine-point-nine-nine percent of the owners, they get ninety-nine-point-nine-nine percent of the tax benefits, but they're semi, you know, silent partners or what have you, obviously major decisions that in fact impact the investment, they want to understand and approve, but the main day-to-day operations will continue to be done by MHP and its affiliates.
Okay, and then just the other thing that seemed obvious to me with Councilmember Schultz's, going through those various points, was that the state and the county essentially get monetary benefits from this deal and are then providing pilots, the city gets none of those transfer of recordation, any of that, kind of that friction that you were talking about, which makes it why we have so much angst about contributing to the pilot, if those other entities are offering a hundred percent pilots for forty years, they're essentially getting paid in some percentage, I don't know what the percentage is upfront for what they're providing, by those taxes and fees, and the city isn't any part of that, so our incentive is different, so I, I want to continue to try and follow the model that we've accepted, where we have rent stabilization on some buildings, and we have other qualifications for low and moderate income people to get rentals at a reduced cost, and these types of deals seem to be a way to do that, I want to continue to try and have the two models going forward, so I'm supportive of some pilot from the city, and I think last time we had a breakdown, if it still holds, of three of my colleagues for zero percent, three of my colleagues for fifty percent, and I'm weighing in on the side of fifty percent, but I don't want to go any higher than that, because we're not getting anything like the other ones are for providing a hundred percent, it seems clear to me that the whole level of kind of back and forth on that is very different for those entities than for us. Councilmember Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Robert, for coming tonight, this is, as you could have seen, a difficult issue, difficult to understand maybe, but also difficult to see how we justify forgiveness of taxes, I guess, you know, I won't spend a lot of time on it, I think you recognize that everyone in the council seems to appreciate the work that MHP does in the city, you really bring quality, affordable housing, and I certainly appreciate that, as you know, from our last census, which was some time ago now, in two thousand, the majority of the city residents are renters, and we do have rent stabilization, so it would be a foolish council member that didn't want to support affordable housing in Tacoma Park, but at the same time, not everybody follows your model on how they provide affordable housing, and so as a council member representing a neighborhood that has a very high number of rental units, I want to make sure that I'm fair to all landowners that provide affordable housing, and not show favoritism to one organization such as MHP, and my question, and maybe Linda could answer this from our housing department, is on the market rates that are listed in this document, Linda, are you comfortable that these represent Tacoma Park market rates?
Well, as you know, we don't really have market rates in Tacoma Park, they're all mostly rent stabilized, and I probably won't be able to give you an answer this evening, what we could do though is, is go through our two thousand and nine rent reports, because right now we're collecting the two thousand and ten reports, and we can probably give you an average for one and two and three bedroom units, so.
I appreciate that, because, you know, the way this report looks is that MHP is providing housing that is slightly below the mark, or significantly below the market rate in some cases, and if that market rate is the rate that we could expect in a rent-controlled unit in Tacoma Park, then that would mean that the MHP model is maybe providing a higher level of affordability than the landlords are providing under rent stabilization.
The market rent here being, what I'm reading here is nine-eighty-four for a one-bedroom, one-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-four for two, is that the figure we're looking at?
No, I think over two, three columns to your left there is market rents.
Okay, yeah, that, those rents definitely are substantially higher than what the average rent would be for units in Tacoma Park.
Okay.
So, but we can, you know, we can get your figure from.
And so I think the thing that would be, the comparison I'm really looking for is, to the left of that, the gross rents, I guess, and Robert, you may, and your staff may be able to better answer what we're trying to compare to, to see whether, you know, how the MHP building rents compare to rent stabilized rents, and my point is that, as I said, there are a number of landlords in Tacoma Park who have to maintain their buildings and continue to provide affordable rents, under rent stabilization, they're able to do that under the Fair Return portion of Rent Stabilization Act, and that's not something that equates to what MHP does, so I can certainly see that there may be need for some relief to MHP, if they maintain the same level of rents and do this additional work, but I certainly can't say that if everything else is equal, that MHP should get pilot and other landlords should not, and I'm certainly not trying to open the floodgates here, I think the approach would be that there has to be justification where this is different, and so would benefit the community.
Counselor Wright?
I'm going to defer to Councilmember Robinson, because I think he hasn't spoken yet. And, yeah, this seems to be the comment period, so I'm just gonna, but I do have a couple of questions, and I'm not as expert as my colleagues on the intricacies of the two, I see two approaches, the, our approach of rent stabilization and what appears to be Montgomery County's approach at affordable housing, and that seems to me to be what's at issue here, is the, are we, are we providing an avenue for both, and will that be, is that the direction we're going to head in the future, my only questions are, just to review, our housing budget is, is about how much, Linda?
Fifty-six.
It's about a million dollars, and what's the rebate we get from the county? Zero, so in a sense, we are spending a million dollars now every year to provide affordable housing, in a certain, in a certain sense, without, without the county helping us out, and their rationale, as I understand it, is because their approach is different from our approach, they won't help us in delivery of affordable housing, is that correct?
I gave you the overall number for our entire budget, and that does not include just housing.
Okay.
I'd say probably two-thirds of the, or a third of that is housing-related.
Right, because you're the director of Housing and Community Development.
I have it all, yeah, the city does not receive any rebates for any of the services that we provide, because they are duplicative but special from what the county provides, and as we have researched in the past with the Tax Duplication Group, most of the services that the county provides that are housing-related, that we also provide, are financed through fees that they collect and not property taxes.
Say that again, please.
The house, the state, the county's housing services, that includes code enforcement as well as our landlord tenant services, are basically offset by the fees that they collect for their rental housing programs, that's what's been represented to us, and that's why there is no tax duplication rebate, if you will, for the city's services.
I, I know it's complicated, but I do remember as co-chair of TASD, learning that they considered our housing policies different enough from their housing policies, that that was certainly a factor in their decision whether or not to give us any rebate for our housing.
That is a factor, but the primary reason, from what I understand, is that there are no tax dollars going into those services that we duplicate, it's all fee-based revenues, all rev, all of the county's expenses are offset by fees that they collect from rental housing providers.
I see, so all, so rental housing fees in general pay for their affordable housing policies?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so our model is quite different, and how much of the housing that we have in Tacoma Park is, rental housing is affordable rental housing?
Yeah, I would say a hundred percent of the rental housing, because it's.
Because it's all subject to rent stabilization, so we provide.
Two or three units under rent stabilization.
So, except for the very small units, like the one-unit buildings, or so.
商品房 homes are not.
Most of our housing in Tacoma Park, ninety-some percent is affordable housing, according to our definition.
Yes.
Okay, and in the county, what's the percentage of housing that's affordable housing?
You know, I don't think I would know that.
Would you venture a guess? Of all the rental housing in the county, how much is affordable rental housing?
We can find that information for you, the challenge is that affordable is defined as a percentage of the income for the area, and typically, the incomes, or household incomes in Tacoma Park are lower than they are in the Silver Spring area and in other parts of the county, so when you look at what is affordable housing, it's typically based on the area median income, and a percentage of that is set aside for housing-related costs, that includes mortgage, utilities, taxes, rents.
That becomes, sorry, just interrupt, if you do it that way, it becomes a self-fulfilling prophecy.
I would not disagree with that.
Okay, I just want to be clear about that.
But that's, that's the tricky part, when you start talking about affordable housing, it's not just Section Eight, it's not just low-income housing tax credit projects, it's not just properties that are owned and managed for, managed by nonprofit organizations such as MHP, it's, there are many definitions, but traditionally Tacoma Park's rents are lower than they are in the immediate area and the county as a whole.
And that's partly because of our rent stabilization policies, or maybe largely, or maybe what we don't, and the last question is, what percentage of Montgomery County households are rental households? We are fifty percent.
I don't, I don't know the answer to that question, but we can find that out, in Tacoma Park, they tend to be a little higher.
Well, it's, I mean, we're fifty, roughly fifty percent of our households are rental households, is the, kind of the.
Terry's going to look it up.
Oh, Terry's looking it up, that's great, that's my, that's my operating assumption, and that's what I've heard over the years, and, and I'm just, so my question is, well, what percentage of Montgomery County households are rental houses, and I'm asking all these questions, they're sort of rhetorical, you know, I'm kind of building to my point, which is, unfortunately, I'm not going to support a pilot for this project, and it's not because I don't think this project is a valuable project or an important project, and it's not because I don't think that MHP is a substantial player or a great deliverer of service, of these kinds of services of affordable housing, but I do think that our model is substantially different, and I think that trying to pursue both models will get us in trouble, I think that we are already paying a great deal of money for our status and policies as they are, so that's, that's, sorry for all the questions, to make a kind of a general point, but that's what I was after.
Counselor Wright, did you want to?
I just have a few very brief comments, one is that I think the calculation that needs to be done is that where we're losing or paying for affordable housing is that the property values for the rent-stabilized housing is, are lower, and the tax base is lower, and you get less tax revenue, and that's how, that's how we're, we're paying for affordable housing, and the county doesn't rebate us for that, you know, there's, we haven't been able to calculate that number, but that's, that's the facts, the second thing is just to point out that the tax credit system that is used to pay for affordable housing in this country is a little bit.
to pay for affordable housing in this country is a little bit odd, and it does create a lot of friction, but that's not MHP's fault. And I've seen this firsthand because I've been part of a new markets, tax credit deal on a charter school, and it's very complex, and you do have to pay a high fee to the, to some of the parties involved. But in aggregate, if you didn't have that, you wouldn't be getting very significant amounts of financing. One advantage to the tax credit system, or at least the way it's administered, you could administer this and other affordable housing programs, is that you actually have income qualification. So one of the weaknesses of the way we provide affordable housing is that there's no income qualification. So everyone gets a subsidy, there's no check or balance on the income. And then the last thing I just want to say to all is like, the money, you know, it's, we are really thinking about this hard because the money really does matter to us. So I just want to, if you look at the 50% pilot versus the 100% pilot, it's a little more than $6,000 a year. When we were debating the budget last year, we were looking for $20,000 to keep a library shelter. So it's a third of a, of a part-time library shelter that really impacts the, you know, the functioning of the library. Or something that'll come up later, it's approximately a little bit more than the cost for the city to be more environmentally conscious by not using gas-powered leaf blowers to do our leaf removals. So it's real, in the terms of the county budget, it seems real small, but to us, it's like significant money and, and does fund real things and has real trade-offs for us. So I just wanted to point that out.
Mayor, may I answer this question?
Oh, yes, your, your.
It appears that about 32.3% of the, of the county residents are renters.
Thank you. Councilmember Snipper.
Thank you, Mayor. We seem to have slipped into comments as well as questions. So I will follow that model and mix questions with comments.
It's my fault.
I'll blame it all on you.
It's my fault.
But I'll start with a question, which is, can you give us some idea of how you would make up the difference if we did a 50% pilot? What, what parts of the renovation would you not do or you're likely not to do?
As I sort of tried to outline, and I think some of this is still unknown, but, you know, there's sort of two elements, as you all know. I mean, it's the cost side and the revenue side. So one option is to find ways to reduce the cost of the renovation. And as I said, once we do a certain amount of renovation, there are certain things that will, will be required of us in terms of bringing it up to a new code standard. So those things, obviously, we cannot cut, that they're be required of us. So we'll look, in terms of reducing costs, we'll look to those things. In terms of the revenue side, you know, we'll, we'll be, look, turn, you know, try and turn over every stone to see where we can find additional revenue. We don't know of any additional right now, but, you know, we'll continue, that's what we do, and, and we'll continue to try to do that. But that, those are the considerations that we'll be having. And as I said, we haven't gone into any detail in terms of exactly what, on the cost side, what exactly will be, will be, need to be cut. But we'll have to look at those things that aren't code, you know, or major system-related that we feel have, absolutely have to be done.
Well, I was hoping for more specifics, but I realize that's hard to do.
Right. I mean, I tried to, you know, there's things, I mean, as you look at the renovation, there's things like the windows, there's things like kitchens and the bathrooms, and those aren't, I mean, to some degree, some of that stuff is not required by code. So we would be looking at those types of things in terms of what would not be done.
I too, for many of the same reasons, my fellow council members are uncomfortable with a large pilot. I, however, see a couple of things on both sides of the argument. One is that a, the MHP buildings are a, a model for the surrounding apartment buildings. I've heard from a number of tenants near, in adjoining neighboring apartment buildings in those, near to those units that have been renovated in my ward, that it gives a little edge for the tenants to press their landlords for upgrades in their apartments. I think it also improves the neighborhood to have nice-looking, energy-efficient units in the neighborhood, as opposed to ones that are in need of major repair. So I think there is a general benefit to the neighborhoods and therefore Tacoma Park for these. In addition, we are getting a lot of outside investment. How, how it's being done is there's a lot of outside investment in Tacoma Park. Now, questions have been raised about whether that's the best way to get that investment and who is benefiting from that outside investment. I think that's, those are real questions. I'm not really happy that a lot of investors are going to get large tax benefits by investing in this. But wishing that it were different doesn't, of course, make it so. You know, if MHP had all the money, then they would do it themselves, and they wouldn't go to outside investors. But so far, that's not how it works. I also am very supportive of affordable housing, as every, certainly everyone in the council And I, I am always interested in alternative models for how to provide affordable housing. To me, Tacoma Park's rent stabilization has been quite successful. It's been around for about 30 years. And while I would, I would say that the apartments that are successful in, under the rent stabilization Tacoma Park program, if we call it that, are those that are older, small, and not renovated. And I think that's how they can be, that's how landlords can make it work in Tacoma Park. They tend to be small apartments, smaller than many people would like. They tend to be in older buildings with more problems, and they definitely don't have new fancy kitchens. So keeping that in mind, my thought, as I've expressed to MHP before, is for you guys to look for ways to do cheaper renovations. And I've said that, that before. On the one hand, it's great to provide high-quality apartments to low-income people, however we define that. It's just that financially, making the numbers work is, as you know, as I do, extraordinarily difficult. It's just hard to figure out how to do a really nice renovation and keep rents low. The numbers just, just don't work. You end up having to either charge more in rent, which is what the market does, or look for a lot of subsidies, tax credits, pilots, et cetera. So I, again, make my pitch, as a longtime supporter, that for this one and in the future, you keep that in mind, that you do the absolute minimum you can do. I just, I just think that's the only way to make the whole thing work. I realize that it's very hard to go to banks and go to the state and so on and get them to cough up money for the bare minimum renovations. But I just don't see how the financing can work otherwise. As you heard tonight, the city has, the council, has a really hard time swallowing a large pilot for this. And that's, that's what you're hearing clearly. I strongly support a 50% pilot and will, would argue very forcefully that 50 is a solid amount that I believe indicates our support for the, city's support for the project and is essentially something that we can afford. I think the city gets an amount of value that's worth, worth that. I think Edinburgh House in particular is a, it's nice to have a quality property, a well-maintained property on that site. It's a prominent place on Maple Avenue. I go buy it all the time. I would hate to see it fall into total disrepair, you know, and have some other problems, get, you know, have to be sold or demolished or something like that. So for all those reasons, I urge my council members to support a 50% pilot as kind of a, keep this thing going and support what MHP is doing without breaking the bank in Tacoma Park. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
I, I have some questions, actually, rather than comments. When you were up earlier talking, you mentioned the, the limited partners, 99.9% owners, which I understand. But who, who are those investors? Have they been identified yet? Or is this something like a subscription that you're looking to get investors?
Well, we have talked to a group called, you know, Enterprise. It used to be called Enterprise Foundation. I think they're now called Enterprise Community Partners. It's a.
In Columbia.
In Columbia. That was founded by.
I know who they are. My daughter works for them.
Okay. Done by Jim Rouse. And they pull together investors, so they have funds that they pull together from investors into a fund.
Oh, okay.
Sometimes it's a one, it's investors, sometimes it's multi-investors. They're not identified who those investors are from the fund, but they're the, they're, they're like the general partner of that fund.
I understand. That answers. Thank you. Looking at your, this is a different question. In your cash flow with 100% pilot, I noticed that you have real estate taxes there of, like in year one, of $3,140, assuming that Tacoma Park provides 100% pilot. And you're also told us that the county's going to provide 100% pilot. So who, where's?
Yeah, there's a small element of the taxes that go to the state.
Yeah, I was afraid that's what you were going to say. Because that's a, there's a little irony there. I'll just leave it at that. Also, the, obviously, as the pilot, the larger the pilot, the lower you operate your, your taxes, I mean, your, excuse me, the lower your expenses. But, but the fact is, is that for the first year, and I understand this is just a pro forma, we don't really know what is the first year, when it'll actually begin, that between the 0 and 100% pilot, the actual difference is about, in operating expenses, it's not really operating expenses, is about not, 345 versus 333. It's about $12,000 difference in expense, which to me is not a terrific variation between, between the two scenarios of 0 and 100% pilot. I also noticed that, of course, your, your loan principal would be smaller with a 0% pilot because for the obvious reasons, you can't borrow as much. But that also has the, the side effect of reducing your, your, your PNI payments. So that, that helps you to close the expense gap. Is that right?
Right. I mean, I think the point is that with the additional income created by the pilot, we go out and we're borrowing off that income.
Right.
And that's why we have a higher.
Right. And you can borrow more because of the, because of the capitalization of the rent.
Yes.
I understand that. Okay. But also, the, the follow-up question, and I guess it's my last question, is that these three scenarios that you've got here of 100% pilot, 50% and 0% pilot, there's no reflection of any change in the revenue side of the cash flow model. That stays the same regardless. And I'm wondering, you know, why that wouldn't change to some degree? Because obviously, the rents that you're going to charge are, I mean, they're designed to make, make the cash flow work. But to the, beyond that, they're arbitrary. They're, they're what you, as, as the, as the formulator of this project decide the rents need to be in order to make this whole thing come out in the end. So I would think that as your expenses go down, you could reduce your rents or, or, you know, there would be some correlation between, between the income side of the pro forma and the expense side of the pro forma.
Well, I think we kept them the same just to say had some apples-to-apples comparisons. And I think the point that we were trying to make is that we would use the additional income from the pilot.
Right.
Towards a higher debt amount, loan amount. So we could do renovations at, at those levels.
So you just wanted to hold the, the rent as a constant so that you could look at the other aspect, the variations in the other aspect? I understand. Well, okay, then, all I would say is, is that I think one of the ways in which the gaps can be closed, if there's not, something less than 100% pilot, is that your rents can be adjusted by a few dollars a month, which over the years would accumulate. I'm not saying, you know, that I wouldn't agree that those rents should be, would be appropriate to adjust them significantly higher, but maybe marginally higher in order to make this project work from a cash flow perspective. Yeah, I just would go back, finally, I guess, and make a comment, is that not only is the state collecting all these transfer taxes and recordation taxes, but they're also collecting real estate taxes. I think the state needs to think about what it's trying to do here. It's asking us to do something that it could easily do. Not saying that the state isn't pinched for money. Everybody's pinched for money. But we're more pinched. Thank you.
And I just, I'll make one final comment as my colleagues were talking. I went back through the, the chart that we have in the packet in terms of our pilot agreements with various entities at various addresses around the city. And I was trying to look at kind of what types of agreements we had, at what percentages. I know that in some ways, this may have been reconstructing back to where these pilots started, but it was taking the chart we have. And I looked at A624 Flower, which had five years at 100%, three years at 75%, two years at 50%. University Boulevard, the same. Houston, the same. And 8508 Flower, three years at 100, five years at 75, seven years at 50%. And then I looked at what we've had with MHP at Edinburgh House, and it was five years at 50%, five years at 25%, five years at 50%. All the other ones we're dealing with, starting out at 100% and working down from there, the Edinburgh never got 100%. So in my mind, that kind of runs counter to the argument that, gee, why didn't you do it all the first time, or why are you coming back a second time? The, the first one, if you, if you look at what was reflected in the pilot, was for a lesser amount. And so I don't, I feel some justification in saying that we should go back and do some more. We're talking about 10, 10 years, I think, at a, at a 50% if we're going to do it. And I feel confident that that's reasonable and fair. And I think at this point, we just need to kind of get a straw poll here of where we are on this and see where we want to go, and finish up with this item and move on. I think we've gone through this quite a bit. We just need to come to some closure. So maybe we'll do a straw poll of those of us who are willing to do a 50% pilot.
Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to, to do it with a caveat, that, that we get some more information from our housing department on kind of the comparison of the affordability of. department on kind of the comparison of the affordability of the rent stabilized units as compared to the MHP units.
Right. And those willing to, not willing to do any pilot. Okay, so we're contingently ready to move ahead with a 50% pilot, depending on the information we get from staff. Thank you all.
Thank you.
And we'll take a short break, and then we'll move to our last work session item.
The next recommendation of the task force was to establish an energy efficiency rent increase petition. And I'm going to ask Sarah if she can sort of walk through staff's comments on that.
The task force has suggested that the fair return rent increase petition be amended or revised somewhat to encourage the introduction of energy-saving improvements to properties. In evaluating this model, there are some, it is possible to do. The other area in the country where there are rent stabilization or rent control laws in effect are, there are many out in California. And they have made some modifications to their rent increase petition process to encourage people to earthquake-proof their buildings. So that's the closest scenario we've been able to find in terms of another model. The challenge to take into consideration is that in the event a property owner encourages additional costs to make these improvements, the typical scenario is that the rents analyst goes through and factors in the costs associated with those improvements. It reduces the amount of operating revenue that's generated by the property and in turn increases the rents to the tenants. So the costs are passed on to the tenants. A way of changing that possibly is that if the landlord were to make energy improvements to the property, incur additional costs, and then have it all metered so that the tenant is the one that actually makes decisions regarding how much energy is being used, then the rents are dropped for the landlord who has incurred those additional costs. So it's kind of a catch-22 situation. Do you understand what I'm talking about?
I didn't quite get that last part. I heard that if you allow a landlord to pass on some of the costs for energy-efficient improvements, the landlord will pass it on to the tenants. Then you made another reference, which I didn't quite follow.
One of the, one of the things that we observed, have observed about rental properties in Tacoma Park is that a large percentage of the landlords actually pay all of the utilities.
Uh-huh.
So it's the, the tenants control the use of the energy, but they're not the ones actually paying for their heat or their lights or things like that.
They pay for the use by, through thermostats and so forth?
Correct.
Okay.
It's not individually metered.
So the-
So if a landlord were to go through and make energy improvements in, in an effort to reduce their operating costs and increase the energy efficiency of the property, and one of the measures that they took to increase the carbon footprint or the energy is associated with that particular property was to individually meter those particular utilities that were affected, they wouldn't in turn, the way the current law is set up, have to reduce the rents to the tenants based on the prior 24 months utility cost. So they're incurring additional costs to make the improvements and in turn, by making the tenants more responsible for the energy consumption, are potentially getting less money to offset those costs or those, for those capital improvements. So this is not as simple on the surface as it may appear because there are, you increase the landlord's costs, you increase the tenant's costs. You increase the landlord's costs and you make the tenant more responsible for it, then you drop the operating revenue for the landlord and there's less money to pay for the improvements. And we have not been able to find a scenario that works yet, but we will continue to look if this is something that the council wishes to pursue. But it's not black and white.
Can I offer something to Dan? What I'm hearing is, is that if you encourage units to be individually metered, the landlord goes through the process of trying to reduce the carbon footprint by making green improvements, the tenants are the ones, he puts out the expense, or the landlord puts out the expense, but the tenants reap the benefits. Because since they're individually metered, they're going to be paying, assuming they're paying responsible, which is maybe not right, but fair assumption, their utility costs are going to go down. their utility costs are going to go down.
Their overall housing costs would go down.
Right. But the landlord has no incentive to make those improvements because...
Under that, under that scenario, their operating revenue would drop. And their costs would increase.
Yep.
Can I make one further clarification? Is, what's our goal? What, what could be our goal here? Would, would making individual metering for tenants and then putting the burden of utility costs on the tenants so that they can reduce their own costs by reducing their energy use? Is that a reasonable, is that, leaving apart, leaving aside the parts of the rent stabilization process, is that a reasonable goal? Is that something that the Housing Department feels would be a, a good endpoint?
It would be, it would be a wonderful endpoint.
Okay, so let me rephrase it so that I understand it. And then we can maybe keep that in mind as we think about the rent stabilization, the acts, the way the rent stabilization law fits into it. I'll just repeat it, that a good endpoint would be that units are individually metered, tenants pay for their own utilities and therefore have an incentive to lower their, their utility costs.
In an ideal world, that would be...
In an ideal, that, that might be our goal. It sounds like that's a goal that we, that we might all agree on. So now we're waiting for you to figure out how to do that. Is that right?
I guess so.
Just checking.
Yeah.
Councilmember Clay.
So on the surface, I would support this for any rental unit where the unit is individually measured and the tenant pays the utilities or where in the conversion, they became individually metered and the tenant pays, then pays the utilities. And my reasoning for that, which I'm becoming suspect of listening to you talk, is that because if the, suspect of my reasoning, not of what you're putting forward. The, when the, when the rents, when the utilities are paid by the landlord, they have a built-in incentive to put in the energy efficient, put in energy efficiency in their, in their heating and cooling and windows because they reap the savings on that. How is that a disincentive to them to do that?
It's not a disincentive to the landlord if the landlord is responsible for the operating cost of all the utilities, for example.
Right.
The negative, if you will, the negative, if you will, would be that because of the increased cost of the actual improvements, the rents in turn for the tenants would go up.
Okay. Yes, if we allowed landlords who, who pay for the utilities to both collect the rebate incentives that they get from the state and collect the energy savings and then collect a capital improvement from the renters, then that would be the case. But what I'm saying is I, I, I wouldn't let them collect a capital improvement from the renters even though it would undermine the rent control law, which I despise. But in the, in the interest of equity for all people involved, I don't think that's fair. There's, there's, there's already a built-in incentive. And if anything, we could help incentive, so if they went to individual metering, which I think costs, it costs $5,000 a unit, it's expensive, right?
It's very expensive. I think it's actually a little higher.
10?
It depends on the property because there are heavy ups involved and all that.
Right. Yeah, well, you got to rewire. I mean, it depends on what your wiring is like. How much does an individual spinning meter electricity tell me how much to pay thing costs? Oh, really? Because in California, I think that costs like five or 10,000 bucks.
Or whatever the piping and all that stuff conversions.
Well, so, so that's why I would say off the bat, let's do it for any place where the tenant pays the utilities because then if you increase the rent on one side, the tenant saves energy on the other side. And, and the tenant does get a benefit and it's a, so, you know, there's, there's a trade-off in that. The landlord also gets the tax credit. So would you, if you did that, would you deduct from the capital improvement costs the value of the tax credit?
Under the current scenario and the scenarios that we've been able to track, they don't, they don't forecast out what operating expenses are, which are factored into the fair return process. So they go historically. So we would have to investigate whether or not they could forecast what the operating expenses would be for a property and make a decision based on a very, a yet-to-be-determined scenario.
Could you shorten the timeframe to 12 months instead of 24 months to capture new data? Or six months or something so that you could get, you could get a data picture? We have, you'd have to have 12 months because of the season here though.
Yeah, and frankly, we're trying to tighten it up a little bit and the, the rents analyst.
Give him a headache?
No, he, he really thinks it's a bad idea based on his experience in terms of doing fair return petitions because every year is not the same. I mean, 19, or 2009 might have been a really calm year as far as expenses and then all hell broke, broke loose in 2010. So if you use 2010 because of some unusual circumstances as your, an example of what your operating expenses are, it then supports a higher rent increase than you might typically be anticipating. So he likes to go back two or three years even for operating expenses.
You can separate out utilities though from the expenses. That's what I, that's what I would support.
We can investigate that possibility.
Councilmember White.
It, it does seem like there's three scenarios. And I think we can figure out solution, you get the three scenarios, yeah. We can figure out ways to construct the three scenarios so that the incentives are aligned correctly for the, and the benefits are aligned correctly for the landlord and tenant and then implement those things. I know it's not simple and it won't be like 100% exactly in every case work out precisely how we want it, but it'll get close enough and it'll directionally get the incentives in the right direction and directionally, most of the time, the tenant won't, won't be in a bad situation. I'm happy to sit down offline and work through all the three approaches. And I, and I bet there's a lot of TFA members who'd also.
So it sounds like provisionally, we want to go ahead with this if we can work out the details. And there are numerous supposed volunteers who will help do that if required.
Supposed volunteers. They'll fully understand the rent control laws and the, all the ramifications of energy efficiency and packing out all the costs.
And if their heads don't hurt after wrapping around all that.
Right.
Okay. The next recommendation was to spur homeowner action investment to undertake home energy audits and retrofits. As noted in the staff comments, there are some existing programs that are available and Daryl may be able to, may want to speak to that.
For sure. There's new ones coming online all the time. The ones I'm most familiar with are the ones that are supported by the State of Maryland, Maryland Energy Office has established a program to certify home energy auditors. And they have that information available on their website. You know, you can look through and, and select company, call and, and get them to come out and make various price quotes. I think the issue here was we don't see a role for the city in terms of establishing audit firms or a certification process or even in promoting one company over another. There's a lot of information on the web that does that already that people can have access to. And perhaps the direction the city might want to consider is providing some kind of additional funding to incentivize a resident to take that step. Because there's always an initial cost for the audit itself. So whether or not the city wanted to subsidize a portion of the cost of the audit for anyone who, you know, could show that they went through the process, they've contracted with the company, here's their audit, they paid X amount of money, if the city wanted to supply some funds towards their, their audit, audit cost. So, you know, Montgomery County has a program as well. The one that I'm more familiar with is the State of Maryland. There's some issues which we'll get into later with some of the county energy programs.
Councilmember Snyder.
Thank you. I support certainly initially doing some kind of education, media campaign outreach along the lines of what you were talking about as a way to see whether the city could foster more of these. And then depending on how, how that works, we might come back and say, well, maybe we need to do more to encourage folks to do it. I think a lot of people that I've talked to don't know about home energy audits and inexpensive retrofits. And so there are educational material that could be pulled together and distributed, perhaps a column in the city newspaper, you know, I don't know exactly what media campaign would work. But just additional education on this may get, may get folks over that hump and they do it themselves and then we would see how that worked.
The one thing that, the only point of concern I have in regard to that is for the city to figure out how it's going to promote or include information about any particular site or firm.
Yeah, that's right.
I mean, the state has a list, utility companies have lists. So, you know, would we say go to, go to Energy Services?
Yeah, exactly.
So we could, and then we'll inevitably get calls from other companies saying, why don't you, why don't you include us? So at some point, we're going to have to create a criteria for what we, how we determine what we're going to include on our, you know, media or educational form.
I, I think we often do stuff where we don't make recommendations. We urge people to go figure it out for themselves. But just educating people that this stuff works, that a home energy audit does result in savings. Because there are almost all, for many homes, there are inexpensive things you can do that pay off pretty quickly.
Councilmember Clay.
So the audit itself doesn't result in savings. It only results in savings if they actually take action on it. So would, is the idea here they'd be reimbursed if they took some level of action? Like they implemented five recommendations? That would be one question I have. And the other question is, you know, could we use CDPG money to do some of this? Or to create a revolving fund after, afterwards so that people would have money to do the, borrow money to do the retrofits?
The county has dedicated all of the resources that are available for weatherization or home improvements to single-family properties in Tacoma and throughout the county.
Okay.
So what we typically do when we get requests for energy-related improvements is refer them over to them as far as going through their weatherization program.
Okay. So we're just incentivizing them to do the audit? And then do you know, do we, is the idea that we reimburse them just for doing the audit? Or is the idea that we reimburse them for doing the audit and then taking action? Department of Energy, when I was doing the weatherization with AmeriCore, the Department of Energy required you did five things in every house to get reimbursed. Some of them were silly.
Where's the money coming from to do reimbursing?
From us.
Well, you may want to set up a tier system where you have some low level of, you know, incentive that provides for the audit, which gets them through, in the door and hopefully the sales pitch they get from the auditor or a similar company convinces them that there's financial benefit to them to take the next steps. And then maybe we have a second tier of incentive for more substantial, more substantial work. It's, you know, the thing about the five, you know, do five things is every house is different. I mean, some of the stuff you could, yeah, you could assume, you know, ceiling cracks and things like that. But it's also the issue about many of these can be done yourself versus through a contract. So...
We did windows, doors, ceiling fans, showerheads and plug gaskets. Even if it sealed the house up so tight that they were so hot then that they had to open the windows to cool off.
They're supposed to put in an air exchange fan.
These were SROs.
Councilmember Robinson.
I'm reading this as spur, this is the spur homeowner action investment to undertake home energy audit and retrofit, am I right? And it's, city media could, can be used as part of staff comment, right? So I'll comment on that. I think case studies or success stories, as they're sometimes called, are important things. I would almost go to the ward by ward competition model. In other words, in Ward Three, you know, so-and-so did this and saved this much on there by doing a retrofit, da-da-da. And in Ward Two, you know, so-and-so did this. But some way to spur people to take it seriously and really try to move forward. I support this if what's on the table is to use city media. I would, I can see this, the newsletter being an important delivery mechanism as well as our website and, and our new social media guy doing person-to-person internet type stuff.
Councilmember Schultz.
I'm all in favor of, you know, trying to raise the moral standard or jawboning or encouraging or spurring or whatever our municipality thinks it can do at no expense to the municipality other than the time it takes to put articles in the newsletter or add things to the website. But I, I'm just not comfortable with the idea of the city coming up with more money to incentivize people to get an audit, which still doesn't mean that they're going to do a darn thing because the guy's going to come in and do an audit and he's going to say, well, it's going to cost you X number of dollars to take out a perfectly good toilet and put in a low-water flush toilet. And somebody's going to say, well, thank you very much, but we'll think about it. Which, you know, if people have the money, they'll do it. And if they don't, they're going to postpone it. It's one of those things that, you know, sometimes the only way to get people to put in those funny-looking light bulbs is to stop making the incandescent light bulbs and say, is it these light bulbs or is no light bulbs? I'm just not, I don't think the idea of the county, city trying to layer on another incentive when you've already got federal tax credits and state and county programs in place is really a good use of our staff's time and our, and our limited budget.
Councilmember White.
I was just going to say, I think, you know, there's kind of two options here as I read it from the, in the report. And one involves actually picking a few houses that are, as I understand it, particularly low income or meet some income threshold and the city investing significant dollars to retrofit those houses and then using them as an example and a way to encourage other people to do it. And then the other possibility is piggybacking on the, the incentives that already exist at the county and, and federal level and state level. I would be supportive of doing either of those. I think it's a little bit harder to do the first in terms of our staff availability. But I think the second makes a lot of sense if the criteria and everything is already judged by the state or the county and we can just piggyback onto it. And I don't think we have to commit unlimited amount of money to it. We can say, we want to commit $10,000 to it or $5,000 to it this year. And the first number of people that apply get the money, receive the benefit. But it shouldn't be based on just doing an audit. It should be based on actually doing the work. And I think that's what the county and state programs reward people for, if I'm correct.
Okay. My sense is that this is something that will move to some point on the list below a top priority and it's a budget discussion. And if we want to go with one of the other options, we'll decide to do it. But I don't think we're going to decide that one tonight. So if we can move on to the next one, mandating green building program certification.
Yes, I'll look to Sarah to kind of supplement it because I think she's much more knowledgeable. I think the council is aware that Montgomery County recently implemented something similar to this. Their standard is any kind of building or new addition of 10,000 square feet or more. Their standard is any kind of building or new addition of 10,000 square feet or more. As I understand the task force recommendation, this would basically create kind of a new category of smaller-scale projects that would be subject to kind of a green building certification. As we noted in the staff comments, there probably is a way to implement this. It would simply mean that there would need to be some type of coordination between the city and the county processes. I think everyone's aware that building activity is regulated by the county in terms of permitting. So we would just need to have some mechanism to make sure that the county does not issue a permit without local review by the city for those smaller-scale projects that would not be subject to the current county law. There would obviously be some staff time training involved with doing that. An alternative that the staff had noted would simply be for the city to not deal with this from a regulatory or permitting process, but merely provide education at the permitting stage, essentially more of an encouragement than something that would be legally binding. So those were the two, I guess, thoughts that staff had. Sarah, did I miss anything?
No. The biggest challenge of doing it at 500 square feet, which is really very small, is the staff resources and the expertise that would be required, because we would have to do an internal review of the plans and determine whether or not it met the energy standards that were adopted by the city council before it would even go over to the county. They would not review that on our behalf for anything between the 500 square feet and the 10,000 square feet. It would all have to be an internal review.
I don't see any questions or comments. So, Councilmember Robinson?
Yeah, having been through the county permitting process a couple of times, I don't support the, us piggybacking on that process. I do
You're saying it's bad enough already?
Yeah, I'm saying it's bad enough already. I do support the second suggestion here of mailing to the applicants for building permits, mailing and
We could mail separately information on green building techniques or building materials to the property owner. Right now, we issue permit letters that go typically either to the construction company or the firm that's working, doing the work, or are faxed directly over to the permitting services. So it would be an extra step, because permitting services don't really want that information attached to the permit letter. But that would be a step we could take to make sure that the property owner is aware of that option, again, recognizing at that point they've already, have applied for a building permit.
Yeah, they've basically already got the project design.
Yes.
Not a great time to add new.
Maybe you should be incentivizing the architects.
I don't know.
Well, that's an idea. I think that, I mean, it might be an opening if they're, they've gotten a permit to add How about the rest of the house? We kind of get back to the earlier item where it's nice that you're adding something. How much have you thought about improving the efficiency of your building? And which, Fred, I wanted to come back to a point you made about you get an energy audit and then they say that you're supposed to do something and it won't, you know, why would you do it? And the reason to do it is that it would save you money down the line
No, I understand that.
Energy costs. So that would be the angle for this, too, if we could encourage people, you know, it's an imperfect avenue, but anyone who's adding something, if we could take that opportunity to encourage them to get the energy audit and to improve the efficiency, not only in the addition they're making, but in the rest of their house, it's an opening to have a conversation with them in a sense.
If I can just point out that the current county process, if you're going for a permit, let's say for an addition to your house, is that you have to do the energy calculation. And you have an option. You can either do it and meet the requirements for the addition, or you can do it for the whole house to include in that, to calculate, to make the calculation for what you're going to add.
I see.
For things like, you know, windows and insulation and all those kinds of things that add up to the, to the energy use of whatever that is you're adding. So the current county process also already encourages the possibility of looking at So it may just be that what we want to provide is information and we can, you know, publicize it in the newsletter or wherever and put it on the website with links to, you know, something with the county or, you know, resources that we find. And there are, you know, energy calculators out there that are little software, whatever the word is, widgets that you can, you can use to make all those calculations. So if people want to, are interested in that and want to, the resources are out there.
I guess my, just to finish off my point, that is that I think any opportunity we can take advantage of to have a person-to-person conversation with people doing any work in their home about energy efficiency is good, even if it's redundant in a sense. At least it brings forth the notion that we're aware, just walk down the hall and from the sustainability coordinator, get her most, or his most recent pamphlet and send that to them. That's a little joke. But it's, it's take advantage of every opportunity to have a, have a contact with somebody doing work on their home, so that they can spread the word to their neighbors and we can go from there. That's my, that's my take.
Councilmember Wright?
Just going to say, I'm supportive of the education approach as opposed to some trying to piggyback and make something mandatory for two reasons. One, I don't think we have the staff, staff capability to do it. And two, in some parts of the city, if you're in a historic district, there's a whole set of rules related to historic district. And then we'd also be layering on things that are sometimes in line with that, but also often in conflict with that. And it would create a lot of issues. And the, the process to go and get a HOP on top of your regular permit is enough as is. If you layered that on top of it, I think it would create a lot of conflicts and more stuff the city staff wouldn't really be able to sort out.
And that's the next item.
Yes.
Get a HOP as a historic work, any work permit.
So would it be reasonable to say that we're supportive of education and
Yeah.
beyond that, we're leery of resources to do it?
I mean, in defense of the authors of this report, I mean, were we to be so fortunate as to be able to afford a sustainability coordinator, as they propose as their highest recommendation? Some of these ideas of incentiv, encouraging and educating citizens, homeowners, property owners, let's say, property owners, from everything from a financial perspective, say you're going to save money to a more nebulous kind of moral perspective, you know, that would seem to be a reasonable kind of a thing to do. You know, it'd be easy, I think, if we had somebody like that to do that. But failing that person on staff, still, I still think we can do educational stuff. It just might not be as, have as much energy behind it, so to speak.
So if somebody's wondering, gee, who's going to design the work plan for the sustainability coordinator? A bunch of the items here are, we're, we could just kind of move over onto that, that column and say, those are potential items. So we'll move on to the next one, which is allowing historic and commercial building owners in historic districts make energy efficiency improvements, for example, window replacements.
As Councilmember Wright mentioned, properties located within historic district are required to secure a historic area work permit or a HOP prior to being able to secure a building permit to do any work. And that includes everything from installing a fence to doing a building addition to replacing windows and other architectural features. The recommendation is that residential and commercial building owners in historic districts are allowed to make energy efficient improvements, i.e. window replacement. If you were to proceed with this, it would require changing the county's code to allow for that type of improvement to be made. Right now, they do not specifically address any changes to a property for cost reasons or do they do it for energy-efficient reasons? Their primary focus of the historic preservation ordinance is to maintain the original integrity of the, of the property, not only from the design or the architectural features, but also the building materials themselves. So it would take a fair amount of lobbying to change the ordinance to allow, to put in triple-plane windows, for example, when you have your windows with the multi-pane single glass, or windows that are in place that are original to the property.
And it is possible, potentially hypothetically, to put in divided-light triple-pane windows.
But if the window is original to the property and the wood can be maintained or repaired, the probability of getting a historic area work permit to replace the window in its entirety is very slim.
As has been
Has been proven
Many times over.
Yes.
It's not like here our Ward One representative could speak to this.
Yeah, but I pushed my button.
I'm sorry, Colleen pushed her button.
She pushes everybody's buttons.
So I'm going to suggest that we table this, because I don't think it's going anywhere fast and we have other things to talk about. I'm sure we're going to come back to a secondary level of these recommendations and I would, I would prefer to move on to other things that we think are feasible. I think that the, changing the historic preservation ordinance is a big, big battle.
Councilmembers Wright and Robinson, anything to add?
I was just going to say, I think it's a big battle. I don't think it's going to happen anytime soon. But I think, again, this would fall into an educational approach, because we weren't allowed to replace our windows, but we did take a number of environmental improvements you can make to existing windows, like replacing weather stripping, putting on high-quality storms, that sort of stuff. There's costs associated with it, but I think that's really more of an education thing than anything we would mandate or change the historic rules around.
Councilmember Robinson?
I see the wisdom in Councilmember Clay's wanting to table this. I think that, I agree, I think we ought to table it and, but come back to it for sure, because I think it's really important to look at how we can improve energy in all our homes, energy efficiency in all our homes.
And with loads of extra time on our plate, we'll tackle the historic preservation law.
I think we should have a, have a discussion about what level of priority we want to give it and so forth. And that, maybe that doesn't need to take loads of time. Maybe I'm being naive on that.
Bring it back in the next round. I'm sure we're going to visit these again.
Okay.
I will visit them again after we hire a sustainability coordinator.
Home Energy Loan Program.
The task force makes specific recommendations regarding an energy loan program that, the home energy loan program that is currently on hold at the county. Essentially, it's a program that allows a property owner to place their mortgage payments on their property taxes, so it's treated as a property tax lien, as opposed to a typical principal and interest payment scenario. That particular program is on hold right now because of the legality of establishing the repayments in that fashion. So frankly, if I remember what I've read correctly, there are very few jurisdictions that are undertaking that particular program at this point in time. There are, however, loan programs available at the county level, which are funded in large part by community development block grant funds or through the energy loans that are available directly from the state that go to the county, that local property owners, both rental as well as homeowners, can access. One of the programs that rental property owners can access currently is the $300,000 that the council authorized to set aside for energy-related improvements to larger multifamily properties. And as noted in the memo, there are two properties that are currently making application for those funds. One is Victory Housing and the other is Montgomery Housing Partnership for scattered site, scattered sites that they have up in Ward Six, I believe. When we were at the state's housing conference, the, they announced that they will be announcing a program that is targeted for residential and commercial property owners, specifically for energy-related improvements. There are two things about the program that I thought were intriguing. One was that there's a reporting requirement associated with this, so that it's not just, I'm going to fix the cracks in your ceiling and your foundation, but they also are going to be tracking it in terms of what impact it actually has on energy consumption. So there'll be, hopefully, some correlation between these improvements actually translate into this type of energy savings. The other thing that I found highly attractive about it is that there are six, 15 targeted communities, one of which is Tacoma Park. So once those funds became available, we will be working with the Old Tacoma Business Association, as well as other business organizations in the area, to promote it to their commercial property, commercial properties within their districts, but we can also do it for residential. One of the reasons Tacoma Park is targeted is because of our Main Street program, but it's not limited to just Main Street areas.
Councilmember Clay?
I think it's a good idea. I hope that they figure out how to resolve the Federal Housing Finance Agency issues with it. I'm sure that they will. There's a couple of other programs that I read about. One was that you could get your energy efficiency improvements certified, and then you were eligible for energy efficiency loans, which allowed you to calculate the energy savings on your house as a part of your mortgage to change the qualifying ratios that you needed in order to get a mortgage. And that traveled with the house. I thought that was interesting. And then also, so that program existed in Maryland, but there weren't any certifiers that were available in Maryland, which I thought was interesting.
It's, yeah.
Yeah, that was kind of crazy. I don't know anything about that. The other thing is that, so there's, there's a bunch of programs, but there's some people who aren't eligible, more likely single-family homes, I think, in some of those groups. And I think the city could use bonding authority to create a revolving loan for that, where they would do the same thing, where they would have a second against the house. If we wanted to talk about that or do that kind of a thing, we'd have to really be sure that we have the mechanisms to cope with it. Because one of the things I remember about coming on the council five years ago is that there was some properties in my ward where the city had poured a access street behind the property, so the trash trucks could get there, I think on Aspen. And everyone was supposed to pay like five or $600 a year in exchange for this development that the city had done. And the city, when, I think when our new city manager came onboard, discovered that maybe they hadn't made collections on five or 10 years. And so then we started collecting again and got the money. So we wouldn't want to let it fall through the cracks. But I mean, that's, that's something that's worthwhile. It's a way the city can use its power to reduce the costs of the loans to do the improvements with relative security, because it's attached to the value of the house as a second one.
Councilmember Robinson?
This is, I agree with Colleen's analysis. And I was exposed to one program in Babylon, New York. I can't remember the name of it. Do you remember that one? Have you been exposed to that one? Babylon, Long Island, had this kind of way to finance energy improvements and have them travel with the, with the house as, as an additional mortgage element, but backed by the city. This is not ringing a bell to you? And is that what you said? I'm a little confused about the things that are not being upheld in court. Is what I'm describing the things that are not being upheld in court?
I'm not specifically familiar with the program that you're talking about in Babylon. But what they're evaluating right now is the legitimacy of having your mortgage payment, for example, placed on your property taxes as a way of getting repayment assurance. So the program that's referenced by the task force is basically on hold until that issue is resolved. There are other, there are other financing mechanisms that can be done and we can further explore those. The, the city could, if it chose to, enter into some type of bonding arrangement through the state of Maryland, I think even, with their infrastructure program.
Is the, is the program that's on hold, the one that Roger Berliner had pushed for, pushed for?
I believe so, but I'm not positive.
Okay. And there were some significant differences between his, his approach and the one in Babylon. And I believe that he took one in Babylon, and I believe that he took inspiration from the program that was developed in Babylon. And they've had, as of a year or so ago, significant success in getting energy improvements in houses and paid for with additional financing that's attached to the home. And the way they did it, now it's coming back to me, the way they did it was they defined energy use as waste. And through that, they were able to, they were able to, what is it? In the same way, we were able to address waste as something that we control, and they looked at energy used and waste of energy as something that the city has the authority and power to control. That's why it was unique, and it's something that Berliner, in his approach in Montgomery County, didn't use, is my understanding. So I encourage you to look up Babylon, Long Island, and ask, maybe you could call him up and ask him the track record that they've had. My understanding was it didn't cost the city anything once they got a revolving loan program in place, but there were, of course, some administrative costs to it.
That's one of the things, that if the city were to undertake any program on its own where they funded it, there would be administrative costs associated with going through and doing everything from the marketing of the program to site inspection, developing construction specifications, developing mortgage agreements, handling the repayments. It's not just a, hi, here's a pot of money.
Right.
And going from there. So they would either have to be done internally or identify an outside agency that would assume that responsibility.
And hopefully, those costs could be bundled into the loan at the time of the loan placement, but that's to be determined also.
Right.
Councilmember Wright?
I think this topic has been covered enough. I don't have anything to Babylon about related to Babylon. Quick note, I sent, I looked it up, the Babylon program, and sent the link to Sarah.
Oh, good. Did you get that link?
Why, my phone is beeping right now.
Okay, any other comments on this one? Okay, we'll move to the climate change section, and we'll go to the high priority recommendation on greenhouse gas inventory and monitoring plan.
The proposal here is for the city should have a second professionally-prepared greenhouse gas inventory and commit to regular updates to monitor the progress. I think the overall response on that from the staff level, it's a, we think it could be best performed by hiring consultants with outside expertise. There's a lot of efficiencies gained for the folks that do this for a living and understand it directly, and also have relationships with utility companies, which is kind of the crux of where you get the information. And having gone through this before, without accurate information, you're really just into the world of hypothetical, which you could spend a lot less time and effort to do. One of the other points that is made is that evaluating the relative cost of having a revised greenhouse gas inventory prepared with the perceived value of what that would mean, or what that would add, or what value that would add to the overall effort on the part of the city, the council may want to consider and determine if, you know, how valuable that is, and how often that should occur as a result of whatever perceived value that has in terms of setting up guidelines for the city programs.
You touched on the aspect that I remember from the 2000 greenhouse gas reduction plan that the city did, that the major frustration in trying to come up with the measurement was not being able to get information from the utilities.
I'm sure we're light years improved from that. I mean, back when that was being done, the whole issue of, you know, energy use and utilities, we're doing battle, not wanting to provide any information to anybody for fear that it could be used as by a competitor. You know, it was the first discussions of decentralization of utilities. So we're in a different, you know, landscape now, but there no doubt will be challenges. Council of Governments is exploring this and looking at doing it on a broader scope. Montgomery County has certainly done this before. We could decide to take our general information from a broader area and places that have already done it, like the county, and decide what our subset of that is, and just apply a percentage calculations and work within that. So again, I think the question from a staff perspective is what are we trying to gain by measuring this, albeit we know it is not an accurate measure, it's just an attempt at trying to put your arms around what the greenhouse gas emissions may be.
And correct me if I'm wrong, my recollection from the effort 10 years ago, we ended up feeling that the major areas where there could be reductions, or the major contributors, were sectors over which we had no control, which, you know, kind of moved through us, like transportation. And so I'm not arguing for not doing it, but I'm wondering if, when we do get the answer, if we're then going to go, well, gee, what is there that we can do about this? We have our areas that we can have control over, or attempt to have control over, have some influence over. And even if we're perfect in those, there are these other areas that are just not anything that we can do anything about, given we're the little fish in the big pond.
Sure.
Is that an accurate?
I would say so, and really, what we are here is we're at step one, which is the inventory and a monitoring plan. We haven't even gotten to the other step, is what do you implement and what do you do? It's just the inventory. So it's just counting your beans. It's not deciding how you want to, you know, what you want to do with them.
Oh, you want to turn this into bean counters? So is your sense that we could, that there are consultants who can do this? Do we need to pay consultants to do this? Do we need...
I would absolutely say that this is something you cannot get volunteers to do. This is something that you have to pay for.
Okay. Questions? So it's a, basically, a budgetary decision? Yeah.
Cog's talked a lot about doing this calculation and somehow enabling cities or jurisdictions to piggyback on it.
And have they talked about extrapolating for us?
Yeah, I thought that's what I keep asking.
We've had a couple of different conversations. The ones I've heard are kind of a two-pronged approach, either to help to do general data gathering and paint general pictures for our Washington metropolitan area that could be duplicated, you know, or pulled out, and say, you know, percentage-wise, for each jurisdiction that wants to participate. There's also the issue of they would try to, through their technical consultants, get a door into the utilities, so that the utility companies would say, okay, we're going to use the cog plan, and this is the information, and this is how we're going to give it to you. And it's already kind of been worked out, so it's sort of a little less frightening on the part of the utilities to release that kind of information. All they want to do is release individual information to individual property owners. They don't want to release everybody's information to a government or anyone else to do with it what they will. So one of the things that cog is talking about is creating the protocol and getting it passed through the various utilities, so that there's a comfort level, as long as you're following the protocol, the utility company will give you that information for your zip code, or whatever, census block, or whatever it's broken down in. But that is the level you get it, zip code and census block. I mean, you don't get house-per-house information.
Anything else on this one?
You just went through High Impact? You're just going through the High Impact one?
Yes.
The next one is Streetlights.
So we're moving to the Energy section, Streetlights.
Well, in general, I think the council and others, I and others, have had conversations on this topic before. A big portion of the city's energy dollars go towards streetlights in the city, both in terms of energy payments, as well as in terms of maintenance. Also, we pay significantly for any upgrades or changes. In the event that we want to make our streetlights more energy-efficient, we have to use only those types that are available through Pepco, and we have to pay them for the privilege of converting them. The interesting thing is that this has taken a step further since it was first looked at. There is some legislation that passed and in place relative to the state of Maryland. It's still unclear as to how, if it's made it any easier to go through the process. No jurisdiction has yet to take it on, though a few have come close. They've gotten some cost information from Pepco. We haven't gotten that far yet, but we have gotten copies of what they require, basically the contract that they require the city to sign in order to even provide them the information. And there's a per fixture cost that you have to pay even for them to provide you the information about what fixtures are located in the city, what the cost for that fixture would be. So they've, and that's already been approved through the Public Service Commission in terms of their process for handling municipal requests for purchases. And I've looked at it a couple of times. It's a very dense and complicated set of documents, and clearly, this is a subject matter in which expertise would be critical, both in terms of legal expertise, utility and regulatory expertise, as well as, you know, understanding what's possible based on what's being done in other parts of the country, where there isn't quite the uphill battle with utility companies to take this on. I mean, ostensibly, you would assume that if the city were to go through this effort to purchase its streetlights, our ultimate goal would be to replace them with something that was highly energy-efficient and would meet the needs of the community. There'd have to be some sense of consensus. I know a lot of complaints that residents have. Pepco only provides now even less lights than they used to. I mean, basically, there's one type you can get now, or if you want to pay 17 times more, you can get another historic-type fixture, but they don't even have the level of options that they had in the past. So Pepco's been shrinking its options. So in addition to having to decide what type of fixture we'd have to, we'd want to go with, there's also lighting levels and community safety issues and things like that that would be in place. Also, clearly, when you're going to take that on, the maintenance is kind of the maker-baker of this type situation. For instance, any municipality that runs a water or sewage treatment plant, you're on it 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The same would be with streetlights. They do have maintenance requirements and capitalization requirements and equipment requirements. And the assumption is that those would be best provided by a company in the business of doing, you know, having the bucket trucks, having the equipment, having the licensed people. Just to even go up a utility pole requires a high degree of certification on the part of the utility company to even allow you permission to go up on the pole. That's another part of what currently exists with Pepco. They have to allow your contractor to go on the pole to access their streetlight. So there's a number of hurdles that are in this process. One of the cities considered in the past is joining forces with jurisdictions that were similarly inclined, so we could try to move forward as a group and perhaps share in the costs, which are assumed to be significant in order to, you know, basically figure out the way around it. And, you know, there may be future legal challenges that are coming down the pike relative to the PSC. It's just, it's unclear at this point if the legislation that's currently in place is as good as we're going to get, or if there's some improvements that can be made.
And at this point, the city, in conjunction with the other municipalities in Montgomery County, has, the MML chapter has hired, along with the Prince George's County chapter, a lawyer to represent the municipalities before the PSC in all of the issues related to streetlights. We had a very brief update on that at the last chapter meeting, and we're hoping to get somebody else there at the next chapter meeting to give us some more detailed briefing. I've had the dubious distinction of being copied on all of the legal correspondence, and it's pretty impermeable. It's, I've kind of given up trying to read it and make any sense of it. There are one or two municipal officials who are following this very closely and who understand it, and we're trying to get one of them to kind of explain the status of where things are. One interesting thing that I heard from the commission president in Poolsville was that they've already gone through the process and bought their streetlights, but they didn't have to deal with Pepco. Their energy company is Potomac Edison, and it was very simple with them. So it has been possible to do, but given the constraints that those of us have in dealing with Pepco, it has not been easy. There have been many roadblocks to getting information, and there have been impediments whenever we're trying to look at this, to getting even the simplest of information. The conversation I had with the former president of Pepco, oh, I don't remember how many years ago, I pressed him on, kind of, we wanted to do this, and his response was, it's a maintenance nightmare, and you're going to have to contract it out, and it's going to cost plenty. I don't know whether that was self-serving in that he just didn't want anybody figuring out what they were up to, or not, but it's, it's a, it's not an easy one to understand. It's not an easy one to deal with the utility that we're dealing with, but I would say all of the municipalities in both Montgomery and Prince George's County are exploring it and trying to figure out how we can get where we want to be. Councilmember...
Oh, sorry, go ahead. I was going to say, I could try to capitalize the information I've gotten from Pepco, just to give you a sense of what requirements they've got currently approved by the PSC to engage in the discussion in terms of the cost for evaluation and the certification and all the different components that make up an agreement to talk on their part. So if the council's interested in that, I could try to tease that out of the various documents that we have. It's a kind of a picture-in-time.
If we can get a sense of what it might take, that might be very helpful. Councilmember Wright?
Excuse me, two, one's a question, whether we think that speed camera funds would be a justifiable expenditure for streetlight purchases, given that they make the street and pedestrians safer at night as they walk around. And then the second, so you probably don't know the answer to that right now, but if we could kind of consider that as we move forward. And the second is I commend the mayor in taking the leadership and pushing forward with MML to kind of try and solve this collectively, because I think that's the way we have to go about it.
Councilmember Clay?
I'm actually really interested in doing this, but I don't think the issue is ripe yet. One of the things that just gets me is the idea that we have to pay twice for the streetlights that we already paid for. I hope that's one of the things that they resolve at MML, and one of the things I talked about at the meeting where we voted to spend the money on the attorney. I'm not really as interested in, it's an interesting idea, the streetlight fund, but...
The sidewalk?
Speed camera fund.
I'm sorry. Well, yeah, using the speed camera, thank you. Using the speed camera to fund streetlights is certainly an interesting idea, but I have so many residents that would like to have sidewalks, and I feel like the, if you can pay for the streetlights with energy savings, you know, I would use that mechanism probably before I use the speed camera fund at this time, but I think it's a great idea.
I just think more if there's an upfront financing situation that you need to make it work, you might be able to tap into that and then pay back to the...
Yeah, well, your residents aren't really that keen on your sidewalks, so, you know, maybe you guys could get streetlights and... guys could get streetlights, and on Lincoln Avenue, we could get sidewalks.
And add to the, what was it, $45 million price tag for sidewalks?
That's true, except I have residents on Elm that are not going to be happy about sidewalks, so it'll happen to me later.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yeah, I'm generally supportive of this line of inquiry. Question, you mentioned the question about accessing power and the need to get certified people to climb poles, but we're not talking about replacing utility poles. I mean, we're just talking about replacing the little metal structures and the lamps at the top of them, you know, which are fed by wires underground. So I'm not clear why something as simple as a lamp should be that difficult to maintain. If a car knocks down, you go pick it up, put another one in its place. It's like, I mean, clearly, I'm an extraordinary naive person when it comes to this, so I'm just leaning with my chin, if you will, or my innocence.
Most of the streetlights are overhead-powered, only there's relatively few that are underground-powered, and most of those we already own and maintain, the underground-powered ones.
Oh, we already own some?
The ones that we're talking about are the utility poles, streetlights. The lights are 18 to 20 foot up the pole. The high-power lines are below. The house connections are about at the same level, so anytime you're going anywhere near electric supply...
Oh, okay, so, all right, so there you go. Let's knock that one down. In general, I mean, the streetlights are such an important part of the immediate environment of each of the property owners, the homeowners, the tenants of this city. You know, and when I was talking to voters or would-be voters last fall and trying to get them to talk about issues, the thing that 99% of them wanted to talk about was the stuff that was in their visual scan off of their front porch. They weren't interested in talking about immigration. They wanted to know, when does Pepco want to replace the darned streetlight that's burned out, or when is somebody going to fix this curb, or why don't they do this, or the city do that? I mean, things are so immediate, and so the streetlights, in terms of their outages, in terms of their brightness, some people feel they're too bright, other people feel that they're not bright enough, or their, you know, the light that they cast down and the pool of light that they create, whether it creates a sense of safety for people out in the evening or it's not. And these are all things that are very, very close to people's heart, and so I kind of think that we really need to pay close attention to this recommendation and see where it can lead us. I have no idea, of course, but I do appreciate the fact that it's not as simple as I'd like to think it is. But I think, appreciate whatever you can do, and it sounds like you've already learned a good bit, and I compliment you for your effort in that direction. Thanks.
So it sounds like there's interest in continuing to try and figure this one out and eventually make something happen, and the public works director has offered to put together some information on what we know at this point that might make it a little bit easier to understand what's involved. And if we move to the next high-priority recommendation, I'll point out to my colleagues that at this point, we have seven high-priority recommendations to go. We're not going to get through them all this evening. We have another session scheduled for continuing this discussion, I think, November 8. So we'll try and do one or two more this evening and then see if we can wrap them up at the next session. And so the next one is energy efficiency and green power purchases.
Basically, as I understand it, the proposal is to explore the use of a public-private partnership program to enable shared energy efficiency upgrades, basically through a either one or multiple energy performance contractors. It could include group purchasing of green power, or it could include purchasing of certain technologies or efficient appliances or other types of things that would reduce energy use. There's also a discussion of creating a power purchasing agreement and allowing people to opt in, basically to self-select, yes, I want to participate, so they become part of the pool that the city is purchasing on behalf of. And basically, taking a look at the purchase of renewable energy through third-party suppliers or piggybacking onto the county's clean rewards program or other similar arrangements. The task force is suggesting that by 2012, the city should implement a financing mechanism that enables cost sharing and discounts on the installation of energy efficiency upgrades via a performance contractor, and that the city should negotiate a power purchasing agreement for green power through a third-party supplier and county subsidies. This was also included in the original local action plan, but no action was taken on this. Not to be a naysayer, but some of the issues that inevitably pop out when you, when I, as a city staff person, look at a suggestion option like this, is we have to figure out how to make it work within the city's procurement rules. We require a competitive bid, so you have to know what it is you're bidding in order to get a level playing field from potential contractors. Based on my own experience, there's a lot of third-party suppliers of energy out there, as well as the utility companies, so the purchasing of green power has gotten more available than it has been. Again, this may be a situation where simply helping educate and provide information and links to those green power suppliers may serve, you know, may get the foot in the door of this particular recommendation so we can let people know their options for purchasing green power. There've been a few organizations active in the city and a few programs that we've been approached and basically haven't been able to participate because we can't recommend one third-party supplier over another. So there's issues in that regard that would need to be worked out. And another note from staff comments is that it wasn't clear whether or not the suggestion was that the city should provide a subsidy for purchasing or just make the purchase available for the cost that exists. The other point to make in this regard is, again, I think this is an area that requires considerable expertise to negotiate. The city currently participates with Montgomery County for green energy purchasing. We purchase 100% of our energy through green suppliers. That is something that the county negotiates on our behalf through a contract arrangement with the company that negotiates for all electricity purchases in the county for certain users, county government, school systems, park and planning, and then municipalities that want to participate. But it requires, you know, their expertise and ability to arrange the purchasing, the contracting, and setting up a fairly complex process in order to select the vendors and create the criteria by which they have to provide pricing. And every couple of years, when we go through one of these purchasing cycles, it's a very complicated process, and all we have to do is basically get a fact sheet and sign on to it and return it saying, yes, we want to participate, but they're doing the bidding on behalf of the jurisdictions and the county users. So again, it's an issue that requires considerable expertise and knowledge on the part of those organizing such a purchasing arrangement.
And I'm trying to remember, I know that COG negotiated with an energy performance contractor, I'll say, eight years ago, to be available for any jurisdiction that wanted to use them, and whether, do you know if there was any success with that, whether they still do that, whether there's any ongoing...
I'm not familiar with that program.
...arrangement?
I know that COG is recently participating in something that Jesse sent me, and I don't know, because I've just started to explore it, while it will avail the resident to, but it basically is an arrangement through some third party that allows you to track your own energy use. Basically, there, you know, you put your information in, your account information on the various utilities that you use, and they've got an agreement worked out with the utilities whereby they'll allow you to track energy use and compare over time, and then also sort of have a sidebar of if you were to do something, change your water heater, what that might mean, and then can you see that in then your monthly energy use in the future? So I know that COG's participating in that. I know that COG's participating in trying to work on the greenhouse gas emissions inventory information, but I'm not familiar with the other piece.
I haven't heard anything about it lately, so I'm not terribly sure that they still have that, but I know they did have that at one point, and maybe if we can find out either whether they still have it, or the reasons that they don't have it, or whether they're considering doing that again in the near future. And it also just reminded me of something else, a quick sidebar. My understanding was that we were going to be able to, that we have in place all of the monitoring that's necessary to look at the energy use for this room with the solar stuff on the roof, and that it was possible to put that information on our website so that people could see energy use of this room over time and have historical data and all that.
Yes, not energy use of this room. It's basically just the energy production of the panels themselves. So it gives you what they're producing that day and what they've produced since they've been in service.
But not any of the use?
Not anything beyond that.
Well...
So you can see what the panels produce.
Right. Do we have that available in any form? Are we anticipating that it's going to go on the website? Is there...
I'll have to check. There was discussion at some point to put the link online, and then the link changed, and we had difficulty even accessing it ourselves, but I can look into that. It's very, it's unimpressive once you see it for the first time. You kind of go, oh, okay. But anyway, it's two boxes with numbers in them, yeah.
But it might just be interesting for people to see.
Mm-hmm.
So my hope is that that becomes something that is available. Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I think this is a great idea. I hope that we're able to implement it downstream in the interest of time tonight and in recognition of the complexity and the cost associated with this item. I would like to suggest we knock this down from a top priority to a slightly lower priority and discuss it more thoroughly at a later time, because I would like to get through more of this list tonight.
Councilmember Schultz?
Throughout, for many places in this overall report, the task force uses the idea of creating a public-private partnership as sort of the entity, some sort of an entity for solving some of these problems. And of course, I don't know, I mean, in each case, it might be a different kind of a public-private partnership. The report never really says what a public-private partnership is, so it's left to one's imagination. Presumably, it's government working in some capacity with something that's not governmental. So I find that to be kind of a shortcoming in the report, because it's just sort of easy to sort of use that as a shorthand for, well, we all know, but we figure maybe somebody can put two organizations together, and they'll figure it out. But in any case, the other thing I want to say somewhat related to that is that a lot of these recommendations, or maybe some of them is a better way of saying it, seem to sort of want to put the city in the role of doing these things. And I'm not saying that the city shouldn't, that shouldn't be the first idea, but sometimes it seems to me that, you know, a city government, or this city government, can't be the, you know, the entity that does all of these things. And like, this particular recommendation might be as a good example of any, as while you were saying, Dale, you went smack into the purchasing requirements that city law imposes, which is pretty logical. Some, you wonder if it's not possible then for some outside entity, a nonprofit, that could act as an agent almost for the city but not be constrained by purchasing, you know, doing all the, going with all the legal limits that are placed on a municipality or, you know, or any kind of other government, but which could in a sense do this work and create this kind of structure that needs, that would be needed to be put in place to kind of accomplish this. And I just think that we're leaning too much in some cases, expecting the city to be kind of the solver of all problems.
Councilmember Robinson?
Two short comments. One is, as regards to the energy use in this room, I'm hoping that we can turn the lights down soon, because I'm still getting blinded. And as regards this item, the thing I would keep in mind is, and I agree with you, Fred, that this notion of a public-private partnership is not well-defined at this point, but what I think we have as a city is a large consumer of electricity in a single body, and that maybe can be a real, we could make, could make us a player in some down-the-road public-private partnership, because, you know, because we buy so much, we have a certain amount of muscle. That's all I have to say.
Any other discussion on this one? You want to do one more?
Sure.
I think the next one is...
Go back to the beginning?
Page 14. Oh. And that's tree, increased tree planting. I think this is largely a function of funding, in a nutshell. The recommendation is to increase plantings of additional native trees on public property, improve the discount tree planting program, which we call the bulk-buy program that we do twice a year, offer free or subsidized trees planting on private property. There's an emphasis on planting native trees in median strips on state highways, including New Hampshire and University, and enhancing survivability of giveaway tree seedlings and city-supported plantings. I'm not sure what is intended by that. I think in terms of comments, the city attorney has provided an opinion that the city can fund or subsidize tree planting on private property, providing the council has found that maintaining the canopy and promoting planting and maintenance of healthy trees of a desirable species is a public benefit, and basically, our tree ordinance provides for that and is justification for that. So there is the ability to provide city funds for private, planting on private property. And as I mentioned before, the level of tree planting has been relative to funding levels. In reference to planting along the medians and state highways, that's, of course, a matter to take up with state highway. They have ownership, and of course, they then have responsibility for approving or disproving planting of any type of trees within their medians. One of the challenges I think we've seen in state highway of late is oftentimes, they will do something, and then they say, but we're not going to maintain it. So anything beyond the initial expense, and sometimes including the initial expenses, carried by somebody else.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is a great idea. Whatever we can do to increase tree planting, I really strongly support.
And I guess a couple of the options that exist, you know, right off the top of the head, we have an existing bulk-buy program. There'd be an option of the city to subsidize that bulk-buy right now. The reduced price is just basically our, the price our contractor gives the city for city purchases, and they have shared that reduced price. It's not a, they're commercially available price, but it's the price that they provide us. So the city could choose to subsidize that by some amount, and that's currently... So the city could choose to subsidize that by some amount, and that's currently planted, you know, those are planted on private property.
Do we know, do we have any information on whether, excuse me, whether the price is a barrier for more people to plant?
Well, in general, particularly compared to other jurisdictions programs, it's been very popular as tree planting programs go. I mean, we have twenty-some trees going in twice a year. I'm sure a subsidy would encourage, encourage others. We do control the plant species that we're planting, so there's usually five or six or eight options of trees. In that way, I guess we put our stamp on it in terms of what plants, what trees we subsidize. There's been a clear promotion of large shade trees. We're not doing ornamentals and small trees. The emphasis has been on large shade trees.
Councilmember Wright.
I think this just dovetails, none of these issues dovetail with the tree ordinance discussion we're having. And the private property is one, but also giving people credit for planting, for future replacement. And then I think that's been confirmed that we could use stormwater management funds to pay for planting trees, so we could, again, not make it unlimited, but we could take some percentage of that budget each year and commit $10,000 or $20,000 to increase tree planting, both in private property. And then there's still, our public right-ofways, you know, we plant as much as we can, but there's still many opportunities in the public right-ofways to plant as well, or replace existing trees that are in the wrong place.
And we've heard from the arborist for at least the last two years that we're, what, ten or 20 years behind in terms of getting the replacement trees in that we need, and we need to do everything we can to try and get those in as quickly as possible, so that we don't end up with a tree canopy that has matured and all starts to, the giants all kind of go away at once. He used some terminology a couple of weeks ago with me that at first I didn't understand. He basically, he saw a tree in a particular location, and he said, ah, teenagers. There are very few teenage trees in the city. We either have little babies, or we have-
Grandparents.
Giants, grandparents, but no teenagers. And so anything we can do to increase the future teen population is going to stand us in good stead. Want to do one more?
Okay.
Yes, no? I hear a no.
Sure.
Yes, I hear a yes, I hear a no.
One more. Negative.
Go for it.
We still haven't done our council comments yet, by the way, fellows here, ladies.
Nobody wants to listen to them at this hour.
I don't know if the topic might entice or dissuade. Page seventeen is stormwater retrofits.
I like your comments, staff agrees. That's pretty good.
Yes, that makes it simple.
Oh, let's do stormwater.
It basically is, you know, we should continue the program that we are already, have been already well underway of, which is anytime we're making a major stormwater repair or a new installation of stormwater, we make sure we've evaluated low-impact design, infiltration, bio-retention, and try to green the installation to the highest degree possible that we're aware of, based on technology and the situation.
And I'll remind folks again of what I believe is coming in fairly short order from the watershed implementation plan that is required to clean up Chesapeake Bay. The draft language contains 20% retrofits for jurisdictions such as us, and that may be difficult for us to get to that level for some operational reasons, but the level, the way in which we would fund something like that over the period of time being talked about, which is I believe by 2017, is going to involve some increase to our stormwater fee, which is currently $48. And I know that the, I think it might be fair to say that the number of people who are irritated by the stormwater fee might exceed the number of people who are irritated by the tax rate. And if we need to increase the stormwater fee to do retrofits, if they're irritated by $48, are they going to be even more irritated if we have to take it to 148 or 248 to do those retrofits? And that's entirely possible. So I'm not arguing against doing this. I'm just saying there are, there are practical pitfalls to reaching the requirement that is going to be coming our way with the 20% retrofits, but it shouldn't stop us from doing them and recognize the budget pitfalls to get there. Councilmember Wright.
I disagree. I think the people are much more annoyed by the tax rate, and the people that I hear who are frustrated with the stormwater fee often just don't know what it goes to. So I think some further education on that would be helpful, and that if people understood the environmental impact, many people would be willing to pay more on their fee, at least in my ward.
So is there agreement that we want to keep this a high priority? We're going to have to do it?
Yep.
Keep on moving.
Yep.
Okay. That's the end of that work session for this evening. We will continue where we left off on November eighth, and our last item is council comments. Councilmember Snicker.
Thank you, Mayor. Recently, I attended the Council of Governments Human Services and Public Safety Committee, and this committee is normally a lot of information sharing, a lot of coordination around the region, so I don't usually report on it. But we had a presentation by the Montgomery County Chief of Police concerning the Secure Communities Program that the Immigration Service runs.
Secure Communities?
Yeah, I love the title. That, that program is that when someone is arrested, the fingerprints, if fingerprints are taken, and of course, they usually are, the fingerprints are automatically forwarded to ICE, the Immigration Service, for checking. And if there is a hit, that is, they find something, then the Immigration Service may issue a hold on this person, require the juristic, the police department to retain, to hold that person until immigration can figure out what they want to do. That's the program. It turns out, contrary to a lot of, a lot of us, who thought that this program was in effect in Montgomery County, it is not in effect in Montgomery County. So I want to be clear to our residents that the only time fingerprints would be forwarded is at a much later stage in the processing of this defendant. What that means is people who are arrested erroneously, which apparently does happen, I know you won't be surprised to hear that, or if the case is dismissed or otherwise processed in some fashion, or as also happens, the immigration database is wrong and the same-named person, you know, there might be 20 people with the same name, doesn't get swept up under this program. So I want to reassure, reassure residents of Montgomery County who are listening, and also Tacoma Park, that someone who is arrested will not be subject to this program. I should say that the Immigration Service is, either has in place or is working very actively to make this mandatory some years in the future, but it is not mandatory now, and Montgomery County is not participating in this program.
Councilmember Wright.
Very quickly, there's a meeting tomorrow in North Tacoma, tomorrow evening, Tuesday, October 19th, 7:00 PM, with the police chief. I think the mayor's going to be there. I'll be there at 7305 Baltimore Avenue to talk about mainly parking issues in and around Jackie Park and coming up with some longer-term solutions related to that.
Ziegler Park.
Oh, sorry. Belle Ziegler, recently renamed Belle Ziegler Park. And then the second thing is just to again, remind people to be very careful as they come home from the metro. It is that time of year, daylight savings is coming on. Try and walk with other people, get a ride. There was a, there have been a few unfortunate crimes around the metro, mainly on the DC side recently, and just want to encourage people to, to be cautious.
Councilmember Robinson.
Mayor, or city manager, or anyone else, do we know the status of the county's discussion of merging park and planning police with county police?
They're, I think at this point, it's, they're waiting for the report from the Organizational Reform Commission, which a number of us testified at last week, and that subject certainly came up. There was general agreement, but not unanimous agreement, that that might be a good thing. And as part of my testimony, I pointed out that if, if that were to be the case, the likely result is that the city would end up patrolling park facilities in the city, and that the city might be supportive of that as long as the county recognized that in the rebate to reimburse us for the added workload that the county would otherwise do.
They wouldn't add any money to do that?
Well, that's, that's what they say. They, that's what they might say, but I, so I, I kind of gave a sense of conditional sense that if they were going to do it, there were other issues.
Okay. And you touched on-
So I think, I think, I think the, the county executive and the county council are waiting for, to hear back from the-
This committee.
-Organizational Reform Commission, and that's, they're not going to be reporting back until the spring.
Okay. And you touched on the reason that I asked, or one of the reasons I asked, which is that Opal Daniels Park, in my ward, at night has, in, at least is perceived by neighbors as a, as a more dangerous place than it has been in the past. There's been recent tagging activity and, and a lot of concern by the people who live around that park. And if park police, who I think visit there very infrequently, as it, as it stands now, the estimate of once every month or so, a park police person will arrive there, if they're no longer patrolling, then that means that Montgomery County Police would come, or ostensibly would come to patrol our, drive through our town to look at that park. And as you say, Mayor Williams, that's, that may not happen, so that means that the burden would fall on our own police department, which is not necessarily a bad thing, but does add, add to the burden. And it's an issue that I'm starting to address with, with Kay and other constituents about how to make that park safer. I'll note in passing that that park's name is Opal Daniels Park. This is, this is a county park, and recently we got a, a letter from Mary Bradford of Parks, of Park and Planning, saying that they don't name parks for individuals. This is a park named after an individual who lived right nearby. So I'm concerned both with this sense of patrolling in the park, and I'm, I'm concerned about how we maintain it as a safe park, and that's, I'm, I'm on a, kind of on a roll to try to figure out how we can take these assets, which are central public assets in our city, and manage them in a better way.
Councilmember Schultz.
The, in Ward Six, the New Hampshire Garden Citizens Association is organized and holding a community-wide yard sale this Saturday, closing one block of Wildwood Drive with the permission of the city's police department, by the way. This is a new thing for this, for this community, and we're all looking forward to it. So I encourage people who are looking for, to buy somebody else's stuff, or if they want to get rid of it, who knows? Come on over. Nobody's going to get in your way. And, and enjoy it. It's Saturday. I don't exactly know what time it's going to be. Somebody knows that, but I don't. Thank you.
I just got a couple of quick things to note. As I talked about a little bit there, the Organizational Reform Commission was an interesting chance for municipal officials to make the case before a county commission for the plight of municipalities and what part we play in, from our point of view, propping up county government and the services that we can provide and the way that we do it. So it was a very, I think it was very educational for a number of people on that commission to get that point of view, and hopefully that will inform the results that they, they take back to the county executive and the county council. Councilmember Wright mentioned Ziegler Park, and I wanted to remind everybody that the rededication of Belle Ziegler Park is going to be November 13th, Saturday, November 13th, at 11:00 AM. And we're not moving that time or date correct?
The date is now in flux.
Oh. I'm sorry I mentioned it.
We're looking at either the 13th or possibly Sunday, the 14th.
Okay, that's news to me.
Yes, it was something that happened right after I sent the email.
Of November?
Out to all of you confirming the date. Right after that.
The 13th or the 14th of November?
Yes. So it's going to be that weekend?
What time?
Or maybe.
Well, if it were Sunday, it would be in the-
Excuse me. I have to leave. There's a fire in my neighborhood.
Oh, no.
Go.
If it's Sunday, it's more likely early afternoon.
Okay. Stick tuned in on that one. And I just wanted to let folks know that I'm going to be going to Rockville tomorrow for a press conference at 12:30 for the kickoff of the campaign to vote yes on question A, the ambulance fee, and I will be representing the city at that press conference. And one other item that I just want to make my colleagues aware of is there's a scheduled meeting with Maryland Department's Transportation Secretary Beverly Swaim Staley this Wednesday, the 20th, at 4:00 PM in Greenbelt, and it's to meet with, specifically to meet with municipal representatives from Montgomery County and Prince George's County jurisdictions about the reductions in the highway user fund and, and highway user revenues, and I'm not sure I can make it, and they're looking to have a representative from municipalities. So if anybody might be available at 4:00 PM on Wednesday to be in Greenbelt to talk with the secretary about highway user revenues, please contact me. And that's all I have, and I don't see any other lights, and so we're adjourned.